So if you can see that. So that would be the proposed site of what we're gonna do. There would be an asphalt parking lot in the, in the four acre parcel is what you can see between the gray and the building. The parking lot up in the far right corner would be the northeast corner. You can see that we'd have some lumber because it is a prefab wall shop. We'd have somebody's bringing lumber, drop them off. But inside the facility is where we'd have, you know, laborers working and putting together walls that we would ship back out to the residential sites to build homes for the most part, some apartment complexes, et cetera. But that is what the site would be at. Like I said, there'd be some semis, so we have all that extra space there. That versus putting in potentially 300 storage units plus, I thought was a better site use. We have also in our plans, if you look at the very north property line where there's a proposed drainage ditch, it's roughed in as of today, but there'd be a finalized drainage ditch. It's also a proposed driveway that would get back to that residential lot. This building would be 50 feet off of the property line to the north versus, I think it's only 20 or 30 foot requirement. So we had the room to slide it over to appease any neighbors to the future north, so we have that done as well. This is what the site would look like in the event that the zoning gets changed as of today and then a permit is approved in the future. But yeah, it's kind of the site that we have. We did send all this out to all of the neighbors and asked them to meet us on site. We had one neighbor protest the project during the planning commission and the farmer that rents that same parcel protested it at the, the planning commission. We had no residential homeowners protest any of this that live in the area. We sent out our radius per the requirements of this meeting. We re-sent out another letter as of last week, just making sure they knew it was coming and asked them to meet us on site. Nobody, including the neighbor to the north, showed up at that request so that we could explain what we were doing. So that's kind of where I'm at with it.
Anybody have any questions for Kelly?
You said 21,000, correct?
The total building will be with a, it's the building itself is like 19,9, the big shell, and then we'll have another give or take thousand to 1,500 of office space. So yeah, roughly 21,000 total.
Kelly, are you gonna have additional employment opportunities here?
It's all, it's all on growth. The, the equipment we bought for inside the building could potentially do twice as many homes a year as what I can do. So yes, it could grow depending on the market, the demand, yada, yada, yada. But the facility itself wouldn't get bigger to accommodate that. There's room in the facility itself.
To recap this thing, Harrisburg is okay with it. You're meeting the drainage thing. You've set aside acres for potential, 10 acres of the 15 are set aside for future drainage on Nine Mile Creek.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't touch that land. That was all addressed in 2019. I can't ever develop it or try to.
So the choice is, as you said, you can put a bunch more storage units up there, which will increase the traffic count, which will increase security that our sheriff has to maintain. So, cause we got people that like to break into those things. Or you put a building up and you build your walls, sidewalls and stuff for home building.
The way I understand it as of right now, yes, I could go put storage units up without any, I wouldn't have to talk to you about that as long as I met the requirements of density unless it was a conditional use in the building. Or I could do this facility and that's where I was ill-prepared. I thought this was a lot nicer site, but everything's up for objection.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins, you have a question?
Just want to remind, this is the first reading. It's not public comment. We're having a lot of discussion.
It's a second reading in public.
I listed as, I thought it was listed as first.
Nope.
Second reading.
My apologies, Madam Chair.
So it looks like there's light industrial right across the road from that site. Is that right?
Yes, if you look at screen two. I have light industrial straight east and light industrial straight west. I'm connected on two sides with light industrial.
And then to the south of you, those are, are those storage?
They're my commercial, they're contractor shops. They're probably very similar type product to what we're doing, but they're not meeting I-1 requirements, I guess.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? If not, is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Anyone to speak against it? Go ahead and come on up. State your name and address.
Good morning. Deb Thompson, 478-56270th Street. My parents own the farmland directly to the north of this. And first of all, I'd like to say Mr. Nielsen did send out a letter regarding today's meeting. However, it was dated last Wednesday. Nowhere in the letter is there an invitation to meet him on site to discuss anything. And if you want to read the letter, it's right here. It also says that this property is near the intersection of 273rd and 471st Street. I don't know what you consider near, but it's about, it's at least a fourth of a mile north of that corner. And it also states it's near the Harrisburg I-29 interchange. It's about three-fourths of a mile away from that. Mr. Poppins was talking about deja vu with, JLC discussion. This is deja vu with discussing this four acres of property. After reading the staff analysis provided by the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's a couple of comments I'd like to make. There is no comment in here about the residential homes directly to the west or to the north, which is all west and north of this is all residential. It is probably more residential in this area than commercial. And it states that the future land use plan encourages industrial development to locate within cities. And this is definitely not within a city. It's in a residential rural area. And it states that commercial and industrial areas should be at major highway intersections. 471st Street is a township road. It's not even a county road. I do have some pictures I'd like to share. I'll see if, Toby, I need your help. Oh, there it is. Okay. I gotta figure out how to do this again. This was the proposed lot on July 9th that I took right prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This picture I took Sunday. The weeds have been dealt with. There's been about three feet of landfill put in. No drainage ditch. This is the farmland directly to the north. There is no drainage ditch. Nothing has been put in. If we get an inch or two of rain with the landfill that he's already put in, the bean field's gonna flood. The entrance to the field, this is looking northeast. These homes, this is Baker's Crossing. So this is far from being an industrial, commercial area. It is residential. And if this 79 acres is ever sold, the chances that it will be sold for residential development are very high. These houses at Baker's, this is the farmland. These houses at Baker's Crossing range from 750,000 to 1.5 million dollars. And they're adjoining this farmland that is adjoining the proposed industrial area. This is 471st Street, residential, 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 residential. This is the farmland. This is the area he wants to get zoned to industrial to put up a 21,000 square foot shop with semis going in and out on a continual basis. And these are not inexpensive homes. This acreage is directly across the road from the farmland, $500,000. This is just north of the $500,000 house. This is looking, this is the field entrance. You can see it's, it's all residential. I mean, so, and not only that, but the township, this isn't a very good picture. It's the best I could get. It's the bridge that the semis will have to cross on the township road that was built in 1934. I don't think it's made to have semis cross it, several semis on a daily basis. So I just want to ask you, as a commissioner, this is your $500,000 house. Would you want a 21,000 square foot manufacturing plant built across the road from your acreage where semis will be going in and out every single day? It's gonna devalue your land. I ask you to agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission. There's a reason that they suggested that this permit be denied. They not only suggested it, they unanimously approve or denied it unanimously. And drainage was a big discussion at that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak on the item? If not, discussion.
Oh, you have one.
Oh, go ahead. Come on up.
Don Hoffman, 47331, 273rd Street, 2019. Everything was supposed to have been taken care of here. Yeah. We went from agricultural to commercial property. Good. I farmed the Young Place just to the north. I sat in this very room, probably sat in about the same seat. What about the drainage? Cause everything from that north farm's gotta come across that piece of property in order to get to Nine Mile Creek. No problem. We'll put a ditch along the north side of the property. We're gonna take that ditch to the east. About where 473, not quite to that pond, there's a draw that heads south to Nine Mile Creek. The water will run there. Sounds good. I was in 2019. 2022, at least three times, I met with Toby. Toby, what are we gonna do about this ditch? There's no ditch there. Didn't get done. Don, don't worry about it. We're working on it. As a farmer, I don't have a hell of a lot of patience. I'm sorry. Three years to put a ditch in? At the Planning and Zoning Meeting, I heard the comment was, well, we don't have the final grade on our property, so we can't put the ditch in. That farmland is not changing depth. That ditch was to be put in there to drain the farm. I sat here and listened to his engineers tell me, we're, we're gonna fill that area up about three foot, but we're gonna take that dirt out right by Nine Mile Creek, create a retention pond there. Okay, I got my ideas on retention ponds, you know? It doesn't do you any good to dig a retention pond 20 feet deep because once the full fills with water, that bottom doesn't do you any good. It can't be any deeper than what the creek is. Go by there. Somebody go by there and tell me that they see a retention pond. There's three feet of dirt that's been filled in. That dirt was to come from that pond, to dig that pond because they're taking land out of where the water's gonna back up. I just heard today. Well, we can't develop any of the other land because it's retention. It's always been a retention. You're not, you're not trading anything. If you fill in a wetland area, you're supposed to create one someplace else. It has not been done. Three years. Now all of a sudden, we wanna do a commercial. Really? I seen a nice picture up there. Kelly and I, we even talked about that one time, sharing the driveway because he was talking about building the house back in there. Everybody remember Sam Rogers? The house on the hill there that was tore down because he had to build it up so high because it's all wetlands? And now we're gonna allow another house, building permit to go back in there? People, I'm 71 years old. I'm getting darn tired of having all these rules and regulations. Somebody comes up and does the song and dance and makes everything sound just hunky-dory and nobody checks on them. Why would we give him a permit to do industrial development when he did not do what he was supposed to three years ago on commercial property? Why aren't we checking on, making sure things are getting done the way they were supposed to? And now we're back in here. Planning and zoning board voted 4-0 not to do it. There's probably a good reason why. Cause I said the same thing to them is why I'm telling you guys. But yeah, let's not worry about it. Nine Mile Creek will take care of itself. The poor people downstream will get flooded out again. Time only takes a little bit of time.
Toby, can you come back up, please? So understanding that this is a rezone, for Mr. Nielsen to put in what he's proposing, what's the next step? I mean, how does the, how does the flooding and water drainage get handled by the county?
Sorry, Toby.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's not, it's gonna be Harrisburg.
And Harrisburg's approving this?
They're not approving it, they're, they support it.
Well, that's how I'm reading their letter.
I, if I may, Toby.
Go ahead.
We've, we're running into this circumstance with the city of Sioux Falls. We say more and more with the city of Harrisburg. We rezoned, but then it falls under the jurisdiction of the municipality of Harrisburg or Sioux Falls. I'm not familiar with Harrisburg, but I'm going to guess they don't have the infrastructure in place to actually enforce. I know the city of Sioux Falls is, lacks the infrastructure to take care of what we grant them for jurisdiction. And we're, we're addressing it hopefully with them. It's a slow process. They're not equipped for it. So that is a severe issue as these areas become under the jurisdiction of adjoining municipalities. So I urge caution, if for no other reason than that, because there is no infrastructure for the municipality to enforce any jurisdiction when it comes to what does or does not happen as far as drainage.
Well, it's, it's already a commercial district, so what's the difference? As far as drainage is concerned?
Well.
There isn't any.
The, the, I think this differential will be is, he would, unless I'm incorrect, have to follow what the jurisdiction was. I would hope, unless he applies. I don't know how this goes because this was rezoned and had a set of plans based on what the county requirements were. Which Toby, can you, I was gonna ask you, and you might as well do it now. Is that ditch that is in discussion there or is it not there?
It's not there. No. But, but again, this gets to the point that when, when we issue a building permit and there's actually construction there, it'll be completed. There, there was never a promise that it was gonna be done immediately once the rezon was in place because we don't have a grading permit now. The neighbors are gonna disagree with that and all, well, issue that. But, but we did meet with them and we discussed that part of it. I would address Commissioner Poppins' points is that we still have flood plan on that property. So I still think I'm in discussions with Harrisburg on how to proceed with that, but I still think that they'll accept what we've already been approved for with, with the drainage, with the drainage plan. But no guarantees on that, but, but I think because we have flood plan on the property, I think that's how we'll enforce that part of it, so.
Toby, help me understand something. It's already zoned commercial, okay? So all Mr. Nielsen has to do is say, okay, you don't wanna have a building here, all right? I'm just gonna put storage units there. And he can do that, correct?
Correct.
No big deal, he can do that. So, and now we got storage units. And now we got traffic. I know, I know we talked about semis, but storage units, if you have somebody, they come back and forth about every damn day. And storage units also require our supervision by our sheriff's department. And we, we got, we got a ton of those darn things out there. So I'm, I'm hard pressed to figure out, what is the difference? If you put a building up and you're housed inside and you're building something and you take that out or having, I don't know how many, how many storage units you can put there? How many? 300 storage units. 300 storage units? And, and if you're, if you're living there, you made a good point about residential, I understand that. But yet the residential can complain every, every which way, but he has the ability to put 300 storage units there. Now, 300 storage units versus one building, uh, I don't know. If I'm living there, I think I'd rather see a building rather than 300 storage units. That's my own personal feeling.
Toby, when we looked at the rezon on 47083, along the interstate, there was a lot of discussion about the township road at, at that point. Granted, we cannot add stipulations at a rezon, but can you enlighten the board? And what was discussed with the township, was that ever disclosed to us? What their agreement was for maintaining that road?
Well, so the valley township's to the south and they have a road, I guess a road agreement there, but this would be Delapre to the north. And other than, I believe the applicant, I'll let him comment on that, but I believe they have visited with, with representatives from Delapre Township. As well as at the planning commission, Ron Elbers, who's on the Delapre Township Board was in attendance at that meeting. So I'm, I'm not aware, there is no agreement that I am aware of between the applicant and Delapre Township. But there isn't typically, Delapre hasn't engaged in any agreements with their landowners.
Kelly, can you come back up for a second? That was a question that I had had was regarding the township and that bridge. Have you guys talked about what that capacity for that is?
I met Ron Alter in give or take 2020. Got approval to put in the culvert and location because it had been their ditch and that and that. Talked about their bridge and the weight, didn't have any issues with that at that time when it was the commercial zoning. I did not talk to him prior to the planning meeting, but he was right here in the planning meeting and didn't see that there was any issues with the township. Since the planning commission, I did reach out and leave him a voicemail, but I didn't get a call back as of Friday, I think it was.
Was, was the capacity of the road discussed with semis versus at the meeting?
The bridge in 2020 when I visited with them.
No, at your planning and zoning.
There was no concerns other than public bringing that up. Del Bridge, no, or commission brought that up.
But nobody from the township itself brought it up to you?
Correct.
As being an issue?
And we've talked about at that time that if it had to be addressed, it'd be addressed and then property owners, I assume, would have to take part in that.
Thank you.
Regarding the building being off of the road, we're 190 feet back off of this gravel road with a proposed building. Storage units could be within 50 feet of the road.
Um, and I, you don't have to answer this if you don't want. I know there's different sizes of storage units. I mean, was your plan to have for the big, you know, campers and all of that, the indoor storage? Or were they gonna be smaller?
This location, they'd probably be the smaller, more dense ones. There might be a little variety, but.
Sure.
They try to get as many as possible due to the location. It's not ideal probably for storage, but.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Kelly, if I may, have you submitted a new site plan to the city of Harrisburg then?
No. Well, they've seen what I showed you. I mean, they, they know what we're proposing and they're supportive of it.
I, I guess what seems to be a common question is the ditch.
I would encourage anybody in this room, I'll meet you on site at any time, including the farmer, including the neighbor. There is a rough ditch there. The farm ground is not getting flooded. I respect the farmers, I understand it. My property was already lower where they were talking about. And then if you would take their picture and actually walk on the site and go give or take 400 yards east of the gravel road and walk out there or drive. It's smooth now because I did knock down the weeds since the planning commission meeting. You could literally drive your pickup and see a rough cut ditch that would drain any of their property to Nine Mile Creek. I'm not, you made two inch drain tonight and you're not gonna flood his property.
I mean, I'm looking at Parcel Browser and I see a rough ditch there. I mean, it's not probably as defined as some would like it, but.
It should be on the north side of the property. Is it supposed to, Kelly, is this, sorry. Is it supposed to be on the north side heading east or heading west then?
It would be on the north side of my property.
Yeah.
South side of theirs. Where, where I, where I have the zone three and you're drawing right there, that's the portion that would have drains through, back in the day, that would have drained through the property and went straight south. And now when you come there, you go to this, their whole field drains to the same point. And it, I had to cut a ditch, if there's a great big tree out there, I had to cut a ditch on the south side of the tree to allow that to drain through in the event that they would have a flood.
But does the water drain east or west then?
It drains from there. It goes, a small portion will eventually go back to the ditch, but not very much because the township didn't want anymore there. So 90% of the north property line will drain back to the east. And then you see that low drainage point running north and south that's already there. Just on the, it'd be just the east side of the red is where the natural drainage has always been. I just had to cut like a 200 yard strip there. Come to site. I'm happy to meet you, as I said, at the planning commission and I'll meet anybody out there. It's, I don't have to talk, I show you.
All right. I'm gonna close testimony on this. You may if it's brief.
I will just add that another reason this was denied at the planning and zoning is because you're going back to spot zoning. It would be an island of industrial. And as far as the comment that, now I lost my train of thought. Everything would be enclosed and storage units. I own a storage unit. I am not at my storage unit every single day. If I go once a month, that's it. And Mr. Nielsen did already build storage units along 273rd Street. About right in here, there's storage units, a lot of them. And again, residential, if you've looked at what he has stacked along 273rd, it's not very pretty to be across the house from, across the road from three to five to million dollar houses.
Thank you. I'm gonna close testimony on this and ask for a motion to approve the ordinance rezon.
I will make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second for a discussion.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
On the surface, this does not look like a significant change, but there is a fine line between what was happened back in, I believe, as Mr. Hoffman said, 2019. And making this jump, I do think there is, I will support what the Planning and Zoning Department gave as a recommendation, which was to deny this. It looks like a great opportunity. There are conditions though that I think needed to be addressed and the township road being a significant one, handling daily traffic is probably gonna be my main reason for not supporting it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? All right. I'll go ahead and call the question then.
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
So the request for the ordinance change is denied. Move on to the next agenda item.
Southeastern Behavioral Health actually rescheduled until September 27th.
Okay. All right.
That's good.
Then we have a first reading?
First reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, regarding the issuance of loco medical cannabis established permits by amending ordinance 2106-30.
All right. Do you wanna, do you wanna read the ordinance?
It's long, I believe.
Is it, I'm, it's probably really long, but. It's a reading, so I guess we're gonna read it.
Do we not just normally read the title?
Yeah. That's what we normally do. Well, it's just our first reading, so we're not having a discussion on it.
Yep.
That's fine. All right. And when's that second hearing gonna be set, Sherry?
The... No. Let me see. Now I can't find it, sorry.
Was it on our consent?
Probably a couple of meetings ago.
Okay.
Second reading and public hearing is on September thirteenth.
All right, thank you. I'll move on to item six on our agenda.
There's, nothing can be said about that.
It's not a public input session, it's just the first reading. So all the testimony will be heard at the next reading.
And then you make changes on the fly and then go on the same day.
It's possible. If you want to change it, then, you know, you can change it and talk to whoever you were working with. If you were working for, with Bill Golden on the ordinance language.
No, this just came to my attention like last night, so.
Okay, yeah, we're not going to take any action or get any public input today because it's, that's not the way it's scheduled. Move on to the next item. Space needs, State's Attorney's Office.
They need my room.
Bill, you're going to handle that?
Yes. Mr. Wallman was going to be here, but he's scheduled with Judge Peck us up in Minnehaw County right now.
So you had to drive all the way up there for court?
He's there all morning, I believe.
Okay.
With being notified at the courthouse committee that we're no longer going to be able to use two A for grand jury. That means we have to bring the grand jury back into our office for space. Currently, that is my office and so therefore I am now out of an office. We already have staff that are doubled up in offices to begin with. So we could really use two offices today to just handle the individuals we have. We are asking for additional in our new budget and we will not have any space for any individuals at this point in time. So as of next Tuesday, we're one office short.
Is there anywhere else in the courthouse that you could have an office that is of any availability that you know of?
I can go down to the HR Director's office at the moment and sit there until we hire an HR Director. And then I will no longer have an office at that time, but we could delay it by maybe a month or two.
Okay.
You could use how many offices, Bill?
Well, currently, we have two paralegals in the same office. It was designed for one individual, but we've just doubled up. And then, of course, I am, like I said, I was without because I was using the grand jury room because it was easier for me to leave the area when there was meetings or they're using, needed to use it for victims or witnesses, I would just relocate.
Does your office, don't laugh, Sherri, do you use that, do you use your little room all the time? Is it possible, Bill? Because you're, it appears that we're just trying to find a slot for you to go rather than having a card table out in the lobby here.
And, I mean, we're hoping that you're going to give us at least one or two new employees for the next coming year, so. This was more of anything else, just to start the conversation, that we are truly without space at this point. We really are.
If you use that room that we have downstairs, three in one or whatever that.
The multi-purpose room?
Multi-purpose room. If you were to take the tables out of there and put some petitions up there, you could accommodate some extra people, correct?
I have a really strong suspicion that at some point it may become a courtroom.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair?
So, I know where this is going for me and I'm looking at our highway superintendent and I know we've talked about highway moving out to the shop and we know what that looks like out there. So I think this is a bigger conversation. But I'm aware of the need, we are aware of the need. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Golden right now?
I have a proposal.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I would like us to appoint, with his willingness, Commissioner Aaron's and one other commissioner to have authorization to negotiate with purchasing or finding a acceptable lease for the bank building because we're out of space. If the proposal is selected of adding courtrooms to this, we're going to need a short-term answer. This is a, for the purposes of short-term needs. I think we need to be serious in taking action of finding immediate need space, at least until we get a facility built.
Commissioner Poppins, how would that work? I wouldn't, are you saying that Bill would have to have his office off-site?
I'm suggesting that possibly there's other offices such as WIC or something like that that might be more useful in that space. Because we have, as much as a difficulty this is, if we tear down the existing, to build the new facility, it's going to cause substantial headache that we have no idea yet. And if we have a property that may or may not be for sale adjacent to our current facility, I think is imperative that we pursue that opportunity.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but that building is not ADA compliant, correct?
It is not.
It is not, no.
So we'd have to put hundreds, if not, I don't know how much, hundreds of thousands into that building to get it to be ADA compliant?
It depends on what it uses and what you put in there. If it's something that can be accommodated on the ground floor, it may just be a matter of putting on a ramp or something outside, making it compliant so that somebody in a wheelchair could get into the doors. If you're going to make the entire building ADA compliant, then that would be, that would be an expensive proposition because I don't believe the elevator at this point is ADA compliant. And so therefore, it'd have to be revamped. But if you, if you allowed access to the main floor and everybody could get all the services on the main floor, I think that might go by temporarily.
And again, this is a temporary, I would not support making substantial investment into restructuring the building. It's a matter of getting us through the next three to four years. So, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there, so I know Commissioner Aaron's, your name was mentioned. Do you want to work with Mr. Golden on that?
Happy to do so.
All right, sounds good.
Is there another commissioner that'd be willing to serve as well?
Well, it's your idea, so maybe that should be you.
I'm glad to serve as well.
Okay, great. All right, we'll move on to item seven on our agenda.
I don't know if Sherri got the answer there, but it sounds like you might be moving.
It all costs money, it all costs money, unfortunately.
Good morning, Commissioner, Carla Goson, Director of Equalization.
Can we rephrase that, just say, morning?
Good morning.
I'll say good morning.
I would like to recommend approval for an abatement on parcel number one hundred dot five zero dot one eight dot J one hundred in the amount of six hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. The property is legally described as the Murray tract A, south half, southeast quarter in section eighteen, township one hundred, range fifty, in the ownership name of Bentwood Place Incorporated. Buildings have been removed after the legal assessment date. We do, we did go out and verify that the buildings were removed. I did not attach the picture in the Commissioner's chair drive, I apologize for that. But we do have a picture of there are no longer any buildings other than a barn on the site. So I would like to recommend the approval for the abatement for the twenty-one taxes payable twenty-two.
Thank you, can I get a motion to approve, please?
So move, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item eight on our agenda.
So we have got two parcels that are within the city of Sioux Falls. One is a drainage ditch and one is the flow to the drainage ditch. I've talked to the city of Sioux Falls and they're willing to take them over. They both have been tax-deeded, so we just need to surplus them and then authorize the chair to execute the quit claim.
I would so move.
Second.
Thank you, you call the roll, Sherri?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Item nine on our agenda, we need to appoint two commissioners to serve on a committee. Sherri, do you have that?
I do. So, not sure how familiar everybody is with the RAF funds. The RAF funds are from the state and what they do is they've given us money to cost share with the townships for structures and bridge replacements. And we need to, they'll be doing a grant process and we need to have a committee together to review and recommend the grants for the rural infrastructure money.
Are you looking for volunteers yet, Madam Chair?
I am looking for volunteers.
I guess I'll volunteer.
So will I.
All right, I guess we have our two volunteers. Do we need a motion or anything on that, Sherri?
Yes.
Okay.
So move, to appoint Gibbon and Commissioner Schmidt.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbons and Schmidt, then I'll need you after the meeting to go over some of the information we put together regarding it, please.
Good morning, Sherri.
Good morning.
You're still staying good even though of the news you just got.
I like that.
Every day's a good day, we're on top of the greens, so. First item I have is approve and award the bid for replacing the structure four two dash one four eight dash zero five zero, which is referred to as the Lake Alvin Bridge. We had a bid opening last Wednesday on this and we have four bids. And I'll read them off, beginning with the low bid. Low bid is BX Civil and Construction at one million, one hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-six dollars. The next bid is Knolls Drag Line and Construction, one million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-four cents. The next bid was Pram Construction with a bid of one million, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents. And the last bid was Journey Group Companies with a bid of one million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy cents. Cost estimate, engineer's cost estimate on this was one million, fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety cents. So it is slightly above the cost, the engineer's cost estimate. But we think that this is pretty good, so we're asking that we award the bid to BX Civil, the low bid.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
I have a motion to accept BX Civil and Construction Inc.'s bid, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
The next item I have is, so this one here is going to be a little, they'll need some explanation, but I'm looking for approval to reject all bids for a preservation grant on structure four two dash zero two zero dash two oh one. This structure is located on Old Highway Seventeen, it's about three, just over three miles south of Highway Eighteen. We are awarded a preservation grant for this structure. So we applied for a preservation grant in December of twenty and we were awarded February, March of twenty-one. At that time, when we went into it, cost estimate was about six hundred and sixty thousand. By the time, when we were awarded the grant last year, early last year, we had to do all the engineering work on this. And come up to about a year later, a few months ago, the boards are going, ready to go to bid on this. Cost estimate went up to about seven fifty, is what we thought. So on this structure, I had two bidders and I'll read them off. We're starting with the low bid, which is Journey Group Companies, which is one million, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen cents. And the other bid was with PCI Roads, one million, one hundred and two thousand, eight hundred dollars and fifty-three cents. And again, engineer's cost estimate for this was seven hundred and forty thousand, so. What we're going to do is, again, we were awarded a grant to do this money, which would be eighty percent. Well, that grant is based off of the six sixty when we applied for this grant back in twenty. So the grant amount was about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, is what the cap is. So I do have this budgeted for next year, but I don't have near the money because the rest, whatever is not covered by the grant, if we accept this bid, we would be responsible for. And I only have just over a hundred and fifty thousand budgeted for this for twenty-three. So what we're going to do is we're going to reject these bids and then we'll go back to the state. We'll reapply January second in twenty-three here for this. And basically, we're looking for the difference between what the grant cap is now to what the actual costs are, so. So what I'm looking for is rejecting of all bids and then, like I said, at some point, we'll be reapplying for a grant, so.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Sherri, go ahead, Commissioner.
A quick question, Sherri, any guarantee we'll get the grant again?
So there is a process, I'll tell you this. So we opened this bid about three weeks ago. There is a process where the DOT has been aware that there's an issue with a lot of these grant applications being done a year and a half before they go to bid while with, in the last couple of years with the high rise in price costs. So they do have a process set up in which we can submit to them an application, so to speak, to bring it up to, you know, to get us more money to current day's costs. Well, we figured out the costs on that and we're, I mean, we're hoping to get up around the seven hundred thousand dollar range. And again, that meeting is Thursday. Again, this goes before the Transportation Committee. So even if we don't get that, I would hope that they would give us the extra come in January because they've already awarded, or like I said, it's around five hundred and twenty thousand is what our original award is, so.
They're looking for two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, we're going to be looking, you know, we're going to submit, our application's going to be on this cost, so about one point one for a total project cost. And then we'll have eighty percent of, or we'll have twenty percent of that. It's going to be slightly over what I have budgeted for next year. But I think it's going to be like sixty thousand hopefully and I could probably squeeze that maybe in somewhere and not do something next year, so.
We're almost done.
But.
Just from my understanding though, you're hoping to get ninety thousand more, eighty percent of the ninety thousand more is all?
No, it's going to be quite a large chunk.
Correct me, I thought you had said you were hoping to get to the seven fifty.
Well, that's just with the adjustment that we're applying for with the DOT on the big grant now. But again, we already started that paperwork in motion and we have thirty days to either award or reject bids. Well, that thirty days is next week. So we don't have time to wait around to see if we're going to get that money or not. Even if we did get the money, it wouldn't do us any good because I don't have that kind, I mean, I would have to come up with four hundred thousand dollars of our own money and that's not even close.
Right.
Madam Chair, I would approve rejecting all those bids pertaining to this particular structure.
So I have a motion to reject all the bids for structure forty-two dash twenty dash two zero one, is there a second?
Second for a discussion.
Thank you. I've got a second by Poppins.
Did you get a chance to go through line by line and see where, was it just across the board? Their estimates are considerably higher, is there a specific area?
I think across the board, everything was higher on the costs. Because both bidders were, you know, they were fairly close.
Yeah, they were pretty tight on their bid.
Yeah, because one was a million, eighty-nine thousand, the other one was a million, one hundred and two thousand.
I was compared, compared to what they are, you know, the estimate was, I was wondering if there's a specific line item that was way out of whack compared to what the estimate was.
You know, yeah, I'm not really sure. I guess we looked at it, but everything on a law, all of a You know, yeah, I'm not really sure. I guess we looked at it, but everything on a law, all of the line items were higher than what we anticipated, which is, you know, and we thought we were in trouble because again, we opened this bid three weeks ago and we just opened the Lake Alvin one last week and we were kind of concerned that, you know, that was going to be significantly underfunded as well, but, which that one is only slightly over what the engineer's estimate is. So, and again, I will tell you that when the engineers did their cost estimate, you know, even the last one before we went to bid, I mean, that was with current market prices at the beginning of this year, you know. And as far as the grant total, I mean, again, the grant number we had that we applied, when we applied for this grant, the 660 total cost was December of '20, you know, so that's how significantly prices went up even from '20 to '21 or '20 earlier this year, once we got the design done correctly, got all the design done on this engineering, so.
Any idea, was it, we only had two bidders. Is it not a desirable project for other bidders or do we need to do something to make it more enticing if we can pair it with something else or anything like that?
So I will say that we left every option open on this. One of the options, and the reason that we bid it so early this year was hoping to get more contractors to bid on it and do it as winter work because they're always looking for jobs for winter time. And this would be a great one to do that. And again, I think possibly one of these contractors may be looking at doing that, but they wouldn't be moving in until, you know, end of November, December. Well, even at that, I just don't have the money. You know, I mean, again, my budget's so tight, our proposed budget for '23 is so tight that I wouldn't be able to absorb another $250,000 additional for this project.
I just get concerned about if we not have the opportunity to take advantage of the grant money because it sounds like a project that needs to get done anyway, so.
Well, again, I guess that would be a risk, but I guess I don't know that if it's ever happened of anybody not getting additional funding on a grant.
Thank you, Terri.
Thanks, Terri.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Bill, do we need any executive session?
I'm not going to give them the opportunity. I'll offer a motion to adjourn.
Just settle down.
I retract my motion.
We do need one?
Madam Chair, vote to go into executive session.
Under all items, since we're still pondering what it is that we're going in under.
South Dakota codified law, whatever.
All second. Just a minute. I'm not accepting either of those motions right now. Don't make me use my gavel.
Commissioner Gibbon, did they disclose what they anticipated bushel per acre was going to be in our local area?
Yes, they did. You know, the national average for corn is 171. South Dakota was 118. The pod counts, you know, usually are 1,100 to 1,200, we're like 839.
Is that out of the immediate area or was that the whole state?
That was the whole state. The areas of Turner County, Hutchinson County, Yankton County, they're just a train wreck.
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to drive to Lincoln, Nebraska a couple of times for my son who's, yeah, Husker, I'm sorry to say it's South Dakota. We'll try to get him back after he graduates. But anyway, you get, you know, south of Beersford on to Omaha, it's burnt up.
And, you know, we started in northern Minnehaha by T, north there, you know, and that was actually the best starting out. And then we got into, you know, south and it dropped off. You know, we had one field around the Lenox area that was in the high 140s, but it just, and we went south again, it just kept dropping. It's, it's not good. The drought is really.
That may be why the market's up 30 cents again today. Hi, Bill.
Mr. Golden.
Contract Airport.
Okay.
Ah, yes. I would have.
I'm going to, there are a couple of other things I want to ask about in executive session related to employee matters and also with pending litigation. So I would ask for an executive session under SDCL 125,2 sub 1, sub 3, and sub 4.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sherri, you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Aaron's, do you want us to call your cell phone or are you going to bow out?
I'm going to drop off and then I'll check in with Bill after the meeting.
Okay.
Commissioner Aaron's, will you contact me this afternoon? Maybe we can find some time to work together.
I will.
Excellent.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Second.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Sherri Colerile.
I'm trying to write.
All in favor say aye.
Hey, Commissioner Poppins.
Aye. Oh, you want me to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. We're adjourned.
You two are staying.